Imane Trenthe Ossana Lesa Turun Guam is back. We are now on item eighteen, consideration of the daily file. Third reading. Bill number one three eight C O R. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one dash thirty eight C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Telo T. Tidegui, Chris Barnett, Frank F. Bloch Jr., Sabina Flores Perez, Therese M. Terlahe, Shelley V. Calvo, Christopher M. Duñez, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Jesse A. Luhon, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Joe S. Sinagastine, V. Anthony Ada, Sean Gima Taotao. An act to amend subsection two six six zero three D five B of Article Two, Chapter Twenty Six, Title Eleven, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to the Annual Appropriation Level to the Guam Cancer Trust Fund.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja.
Mr. Speaker, make a motion to excuse those that are not present for voting.
Any objections? No objections, ordered.
Senator Borja excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Taotao. Senator Guma Taotao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sinagastine. Senator Sinagastine, yea. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number one dash thirty eight C O R, received fourteen yays, zero nays, one excuse. Bill number one dash thirty eight C O R is duly passed by the body. Bill seven dash thirty eight C O R. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number seven dash thirty eight C O R, as amended by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks and Infrastructure, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Joe S. Sinagastine, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Christopher M. Duñez, Frank F. Bloch Jr., V. Anthony Ada, Shelley V. Calvo, Jesse A. Luhon, Vincent A. V. Borja, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Sean Gima Taotao. An act to repeal and reenact a new subsection seven five one two two C two and add a new subsection seven five one two two D subsection seven five one two two E subsection seven five one two two F and subsection seven five one two two G to chapter seventy five, title twenty one, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Requiring the Tramorland Trust to Solicit Competitive Bids for the Mass Grading and Mineral Extraction of a Portion of Lot Five Four One Two Manilau.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Taotao. Senator Guma Taotao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sinagastine. Senator Sinagastine, yea. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, nay. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, nay.
Bill number seven dash thirty eight C O R, received nine yays, five nays, one excuse. Bill number seven dash thirty eight C O R is passed by the body. Bill number twenty eight dash thirty eight, twenty one dash thirty eight C O R. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number twenty one dash thirty eight C O R, as amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Frank F. Bloch Jr., Jesse A. Luhon, Christopher M. Duñez, Shelley V. Calvo, Vincent A. V. Borja, V. Anthony Ada, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Sean Gima Taotao, Joe S. Sinagastine, William A. Parkinson. An act to transfer lot number two four one seven one R seven, Municipality of Manilau, formerly known as the Department of Public Health and Social Services Central Headquarters, from the Department of Public Health and Social Services to the Guam Community College for the Construction of a Nursing Annex.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Taotao. Senator Guma Taotao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sinagastine. Senator Sinagastine, yea. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, nay. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, nay.
Bill number twenty one dash thirty eight C O R, received ten yays, four nays, one excuse. Bill number twenty eight, twenty one dash thirty eight C O R is duly passed by the body. Bill number fifty one dash thirty eight C O R. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number five one dash thirty eight C O R, as amended by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks and Infrastructure, and further amended by the Committee on Rules. Introduced by Sean Gima Taotao. An act to amend Section Two of Public Law Thirty Four Dash Sixty One, Relative to Transferring the Title of Ownership of Lot Number Seven Zero Five Four One, Municipality of Jigo from the Tramorland Trust Commission to the Guam Police Department.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Taotao. Senator Guma Taotao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sinagastine. Senator Sinagastine, yea. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, nay. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, nay.
Bill number fifty one dash thirty eight C O R, received five yays, nine yays, five nays, one absent. Bill number fifty one dash thirty eight C O R is duly passed by the body. Bill number seventy three dash thirty eight C O R. Roque. Clerks, please read the title. Sorry.
Bill number seven three dash thirty eight C O R, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Sean Gima Taotao. An act to authorize the transfer of the Title of Ownership and Administrative Jurisdiction of Lot Fifteen, Block F, Tract Nine in Baragata Heights from the Tramorland Trust Commission to the Guam Police Department for the Development of a Public Safety Emergency Communication Center.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Taotao. Senator Guma Taotao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sinagastine. Senator Sinagastine, yea. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, pass. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, nay. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, pass. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, nay.
Bill number seventy three dash thirty eight C O R, received nine yays, five nays, one excuse. Bill number seventy three dash thirty eight C O R is duly passed by the body. Bill number seven zero dash thirty eight C O R. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number seven zero dash thirty eight C O R, as amended and further amended by the Committee on Education, Libraries and Public Broadcasting, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Joe S. Sinagastine, V. Anthony Ada, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Vincent A. V. Borja, Christopher M. Duñez, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Shelley V. Calvo, Jesse A. Luhon, Sean Gima Taotao. An act to add a new section three one three five to Article One, Chapter Three, Title Seventeen, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Authorizing the Guam Department of Education to Lease Property Within Its Jurisdiction.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Taotao. Senator Guma Taotao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sinagastine. Senator Sinagastine, yea. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, nay.
Bill number seven zero dash thirty eight C O R, received ten yays, four nays, one excuse. Bill number seven zero dash thirty eight C O R is duly passed by the body. Bill number seventy seven dash thirty eight C O R. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number seven seven dash thirty eight C O R, introduced by Telo T. Tidegui. An act to add a new section one zero four one one six point one to Article One, Chapter One Zero Four, Title Twenty One, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Clarifying Real Estate Brokerage Agreements.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Taotao. Senator Guma Taotao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sinagastine. Senator Sinagastine, yea. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number seventy seven dash thirty eight C O R, received fourteen yays, zero nays, one excuse. Bill number seventy seven dash thirty eight C O R is duly passed by the body. Bill number ninety one dash thirty eight C O R. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number nine one dash thirty eight C O R, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management and Guam National Guard, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Joe S. Sinagastine, V. Anthony Ada, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Vincent A. V. Borja, Jesse A. Luhon, Christopher M. Duñez, William A. Parkinson, Therese M. Terlahe, Shelley V. Calvo, Sean Gima Taotao, Chris Barnett, Frank F. Bloch Jr. An act to add a new subsection six three two zero one N and to amend subsection six three two zero two A and subsection six three two zero three A, all of Article Two, Chapter Sixty Three, Title Ten, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Establishing Qualification Requirements for the Guam National Guard Leadership.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Taotao. Senator Guma Taotao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sinagastine. Senator Sinagastine, yea. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number ninety one dash thirty eight C O R, received fourteen yays, zero nays, one excused absent. Bill number ninety one dash thirty eight C O R is duly passed by the body. Bill number ninety nine dash thirty eight C O R. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number nine nine dash thirty eight C O R, as amended by Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections and Retirement, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Sean Gima Taotao, Shelley V. Calvo, V. Anthony Ada, Joe S. Sinagastine, Frank F. Bloch Jr., Jesse A. Luhon. An act to add a new section three one one eight, three one one eight point one, three one one eight point two, and three one one eight point three, to Chapter Three, Title Sixteen, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Driver's License Recip- Recip- Reciprocity Agreements with Foreign Countries.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Taotao. Senator Guma Taotao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sinagastine. Senator Sinagastine, yea. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number ninety nine dash thirty eight C O R, received thirteen yays, one nay, one excuse. Bill number ninety nine dash thirty eight C O R is duly passed by the body. Bill number one one nine dash thirty eight C O R. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one one nine dash thirty eight C O R, as amended by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks and Infrastructure. Introduced by Telo T. Tidegui, Chris Barnett, Therese M. Terlahe, Sabina Flores Perez, Shelley V. Calvo, Frank F. Bloch Jr. An act to reenact subsection five one two seven D of Subarticle C, Article Two, Chapter Five, Title Five, Guam Code Annotated, as repealed in Public Law Thirty Eight Dash One, Relative to Restoring Legislative Oversight on Exceptional Term Contracts.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Tautau. Senator Guma Tautau, nay. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, nay. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number one-one-nine dash thirty-eight COR received ten yays, four nays, one excuse. Bill number one-one-nine dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-three-five dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-three-five dash thirty-eight COR. As amended by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks, and Infrastructure. Introduced by Joe S. San Augustine, William A. Parkinson, Sean Guma Tautau. An act to amend the Tramoral Land Trust lease agreement with the Guam International Country Club Incorporated.
Can I please ask the gallery to give us the opportunity to be able- Can you, can I please ask the gallery? People in the gallery, please give us the opportunity to conduct our business. Can you please ask the members in the galleries to please give us a time so we can conduct our business? I am going to ask one more time, please. Please give us the opportunity to be able to conduct the business. Thank you.
Thank you, senators.
Thank you. Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas.
No.
Speaker Blas, nay. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, nay. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Tautau. Senator Guma Tautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, nay. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, nay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, pass.
Can I please ask members of the gallery, please? Thank you very much.
Senator Barnes. Senator Barnes, yea.
Bill number one-three-five dash thirty-eight COR received eight yays, six nays, one excuse. Bill number one-three-five dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-three-seven dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-three-seven dash thirty-eight COR. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada. An act to add a new section two-five-point-five-zero to Chapter Twenty-Five and a new section one-nine-point-eight-two to Chapter Nineteen, both of Title Nine, Guam Code annotated relative to the definition and inclusion of interfering with the reporting of criminal sexual conduct offenses.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Tautau. Senator Guma Tautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number one-three-seven dash thirty-eight COR received fourteen yays, zero nays, one excused. Bill number one-three-seven dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-four-six dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-four-six dash thirty-eight COR. As amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Christopher M. Duñez, Chris Barnett, Vincent A. V. Borja, Shelley V. Calvo, Sean Guma Tautau, Jesse A. Luhon, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Sabina Flores Perez, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Joe S. San Augustine, Telot T. Taidegui, Therese M. Terlahi. An act to add a new section five-one-one-seven-point-three to Chapter Five, Title Five, Guam Code annotated relative to granting the Executive Director of the Mayor's Council of Guam Procurement Authority for procurement goods and services that do not exceed a value of five hundred thousand dollars.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Tautau. Senator Guma Tautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number one-four-six dash thirty-eight COR received fourteen yays, zero nays, one excused. Bill number one-four-six dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-six-four dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-six-four dash thirty-eight COR. As amended by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks, and Infrastructure, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Joe S. San Augustine, William A. Parkinson, V. Anthony Ada, Chris Barnett, Vincent A. V. Borja, Shelley V. Calvo, Christopher M. Duñez, Sean Guma Tautau, Jesse A. Luhon, Sabina Flores Perez, Sabina Solis Matanani, Therese M. Terlahi. An act to add a new Article Two-A to Chapter Sixty-One of Title Twenty-One, Guam Code annotated relative to streamlining the zoning law for affordable housing.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Tautau. Senator Guma Tautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number one-sixty-four dash thirty-eight COR received twelve yays, two days, one excused. Bill number one-sixty-four dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-forty-four dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-four-four dash thirty-eight COR. As amended on the floor. Introduced by Sabrina Solis Matanani, V. Anthony Ada, Chris Barnett, Shelley V. Calvo, Christopher M. Duñez, Sean Guma Tautau, Jesse A. Luhon, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Sabina Flores Perez, Joe S. San Augustine, Telot T. Taidegui, Therese M. Terlahi. An act to amend section seven-seven-one-four-zero-three and seven-seven-one-four-zero-five of Chapter Seventy-Seven, Title Twelve, Guam Code annotated relative to extending the authorized tax credits for the rehabilitation and improvements of the football fields operated by the Guam National Youth Football Federation.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Tautau. Senator Guma Tautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number one-forty-four dash thirty-eight COR received fourteen yays, zero nays, one excused. Bill number one-forty-four dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-seventy-seven dash thirty-eight LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-seventy-seven dash thirty-eight LS. As amended by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank F. Blas Jr., Chris Barnett, Therese M. Terlahi, Christopher M. Duñez, Sabina Flores Perez, Telot T. Taidegui, Jesse A. Luhon, Vincent A. V. Borja, Joe S. San Augustine, Shelley V. Calvo, Sean Guma Tautau, William A. Parkinson, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Sabrina Solis Matanani. An act to add a new section one-zero-four-two, Chapter Ten, Title One, Guam Code annotated relative to designating December tenth as Insular Forest Guard and Guam Combat Patrol Memorial Day.
Mr. Speaker. There was a floor amendment made to add the names and then, or to attach them, and neither is done, so I just wanted to point that out.
And that's been, and it will be attachment, it'll be-
Okay, so we'll be voting without engrossment.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
And the motion to vote without engrossment? Okay? Any objection? No objection? It has to be done then. Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Of course.
Speaker Blas, yea.
Yes.
Senator Borja. Senator Borja, excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Guma Tautau. Senator Guma Tautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taideg- Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number one-seventy-seven dash thirty-eight LS received fourteen yays, no nays, one excuse. Bill number one-seventy-seven dash thirty-eight LS is duly passed by the body. On the nomination of Anita Bora Enriquez DBA to serve as a member of the Guam Land Youth Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. Anita Bora Enriquez DBA received majority- Anita Borja Enriquez DBA received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Christina D. Garcia to serve as administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority. All in favor, please raise your hand. Or, rule call? Rule call? I'm sorry, guys, this is rule call. Rule call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Boris. Senator Boris excused. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sinagastine. Senator Sinagastine, yea. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Christina D. Garcia received 14 yays, 0 nays, 1 excuse. Christina D. Garcia is duly confirmed by the body. On the nomination of Siska S. Hutapia to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Siska S. Hutapia received majority support and is duly confirmed by the body. On the nomination of Andrew C. Park to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Andrew C. Park received majority support and is duly confirmed by the body. On the nomination of Raymond A. Schnebel to serve as a member Insurance Business Representative of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. Raymond A. Schnebel received majority support and is duly confirmed by the body. On the nomination of Marcus W. Fong to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents. All in favor, please raise your hand. Marcus W. Fong received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. We've exhausted all the voting, and now it's open for brief extension of remarks. The great General Lady from Timoting, ma'am, you are recognized.
Seduce mase, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, before I start with my remarks, I'd just like to recognize an individual that we might have forgotten during the bill on 177, when we were speaking on it on Combat Patrol, the Guam Combat Patrol. And it's Juan El Luhon, who was born on January 20, 1917, died on April 1977, injured during the war, and was awarded the Purple Heart, who actually was part of that group. So I just wanted to bring his name up and not forget as we try to add more to the list of individuals. So. Mr. Speaker, colleagues. Although the body has voted, I rise to place on the record why I voted against all bills that propose to take land from the Chamorro Land Trust Commission for the purpose outside of its mission. Despite arguments to the contrary, Chamorro Land Trust has never intended to be a pool of property for government agencies or political convenience. It was established in 1975 with one purpose, to return land to the Chamorro people to provide homestead and farms and to ensure that our families could once again be rooted in their homeland. Any action that takes land away from that mission is an act of injustice against the very people that trust was designed to serve. The late Senator Paul J. Berdallou made his vision clear as remembered by the late Senator Ben Pangolinen in this floor remarks in the 32nd Guam Legislature. And he quotes, "Senator Paul J. Berdallou fought hard and proposed that the land should stay in the hands of the local people forever, not only for 99 years, as the law says. I believe he said forever, so that every Chamorro, no matter where he or she is on this planet, can come back to this place, call it home, and through land be rooted here." Senator Pangolinen also warned us about repeated land grabs in our history. He reminded us of the U.S. military takings and when Chamoros lost their lands without lawyers, without appraisers, or for fair negotiations. He recalled how lands returned under the Organic Act was distributed for political purposes instead of being placed in the trust. And he condemned recent acts where Chamorro Land Trust lands were stripped from the inventory and given to government agencies for free without benefit to the trust or its beneficiaries. We must remember that this land should be guarded, and it should be sacred. That is the fight that we see less and less being fought for today. We're seeing that being less and less. Senator Ben Pangolinen also reminded us of the sacrifices made by Angel Santos and the nation Chamorro, who he stated, quote, "highlighted the landless for the Chamoros and began to inform the public of the dormant Chamorro Land Trust law." He went on to state, "The memory of Angel for me is that the power is the hands of our people." He galvanized the people on street corners in petition signing campaign that circulated in thousands of signatures, thousands of signatures, asking the governor to appoint board members to the Chamorro Land Trust. And so, Mr. Speaker, while I completely oppose these bills, I had, I made amendments to Bill 7. Nevertheless, because I recognize the reality of how the majority of senators in this chamber were going to vote, my amendments were made to reduce the harm and to protect as best as possible the integrity of the trust, even in the face of a vote that I could not in good conscience support. Mr. Speaker, to take land from the trust for the purpose does not align with its mission. Is repeat. I. It's just so disheartening and listening to the voice of those who were in our halls this evening, begging, begging us, took the time out to beg us, to remind us. Mr. Speaker, I know my time is up, and I promised our people that never again shall we displace or ignore our race. And I cannot and will not support any actions that betray the trust that's been instilled with us, the trust that was created by the Chamorro Land Trust, which this body helped create. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Brief extension of remarks. Any other senator wanting to speak in brief extension of remarks? No other senator? General Lady from Berlada, ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. One of the main criticisms often raised about the government of Guam is that we are too short-sighted. Too often, we make decisions that sacrifice our land, our environment, our community for short-term unsustainable gain. This September session, we've considered and passed proposals that would trade away culturally significant spaces, places our people use for fishing, hunting, and recreation for a handful of dollars. We have been told that the trade-off would help fund housing and infrastructure, but these measures prioritize the developer over the beneficiaries. Furthermore, even if every dollar were used, it would not stretch far enough to address the urgent need for homes, and it would not cover the infrastructure our families need to live with dignity. Meanwhile, our community has shown up and spoken loudly in opposition. Families who live near the sites under consideration have raised concerns and opposition about the blasting, dust, health risks. Others have called attention to the permanent loss of limestone forests and native habitats, which cannot be restored once they are destroyed. To dismiss these voices and the warnings they carry would be inexcusable. The truth is that these kind of deals would not guarantee housing for our people. What they will guarantee is the destruction of land meant to restore justice to the Chamorro people. Land meant to strengthen families and sustain future generations. Instead of building trust and stability, they strip away the cultural and environmental value, leaving less for tomorrow. And this session revealed a troubling contradiction. We speak a lot about the housing crisis. Yes, yet we passed a budget that favored our island's wealthiest at the expense of social services. And then we spend much time debating about how we should use Chamorro Land Trust's property for other purposes than housing. So as contractors and developers save money due to BPT rollback, these bills allow them to further profit off our people at the expense of their clean air, clean water, health, access to recreation, and land that is owed to them due to the historic unjust land takings. This session had four bills relative to CLTC. Yet they undermine the purpose of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission's ability to fulfill its original purpose, to restore and provide land to Chamoros as a remedy for the federal government's historic land takings between 1898 and 1968. And specifically in regards to Bill 51-38 that would transfer two acres out of the Chamorro Land Trust properties for GPD, when GPD already has 3.5 acres of unutilized land that is adequate for their needs in GGO. Bill 73-38 also transfers land out of the Chamorro Land Trust for emergency communications. It includes the vague language that, quote, "the Guam Police Department for its use, as it so determines, including, but not limited to a Guam Public Safety Communications Center." Again, why is a transfer out of the Land Trust needed without seeking other government properties at the detriment to thousands of beneficiaries waiting for leases? To the argument that the CLTC has not moved on these leases highlights the lack of knowledge of the hurdles that have been recently cleared prior to this term, some of which is the settlement of the Department of Justice and the passage of Public Law 37-131 that remove legal clouds for existing leases. At the end of this session, we must reflect on what we value most. Do we see land as a resource to be mined and exhausted? Or do we see it as a heritage to be preserved, a foundation for our people's survival and well-being? I believe that our responsibility is not only to today's beneficiaries, but to the future generations of our island who would depend on us to protect what remains. To the people of Guam, I say, I stand with you. Our land is not for sale. Seduce mase.
Thank you. Brief extension of remarks. Any other senator wanting to provide? General Lady from Berlada, ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Happy day and good evening. Good evening, everyone. As we bring this September to October 2025 session to a close, I want to begin by thanking each of you for your commitment, your presence, and most of all, for your participation in the important work we've undertaken here. Over the past days, we have engaged in meaningful conversations, examined tough issues, and yes, at times, we have disagreed. We have debated policies, challenged ideas, and not always seen eye to eye. But that's not just expected, it's necessary. Democracy, good governance, and community leadership are not built on uniformity of thought, but on the strength of respectable dialogue. Disagreement does not mean division. It means we care deeply enough to speak up, to listen, and to fight for what we believe will best serve the people of Guam. This is our responsibility, Mr. Speaker, to oversee and shape meaningful policies that will affect our island, our families, and our future generations. The work we do here is not always easy, but it is always important. Let us leave this session with a renewed commitment, not only to the issues we're passionate about, but to the process that allows us to work through our differences, find common ground, and keep moving forward together. To our community, thank you for your trust. To our speaker, thank you for your leadership. To my colleagues, thank you for your courage, your ideas, and your dedication. And to all who make this process possible, from staff to stakeholders, seduce mase. In closing, I leave you with this reminder from the Chamorro spirit in Nafamalek, to make things good and better for each other. Let this value guide our next steps. Let's carry this momentum into the months ahead grounded in the shared purpose of building a better Guam for today and for the years to come. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity, seduce mase, and good evening to all of you.
Thank you very much, Senator. On brief extension of remarks, any other senator wishing to speak on brief extension of remarks? Any other senator wishing to speak on brief extension of remarks? General Lady from Zonia, ma'am, you're recognized.
It's very disappointing some of the things that happened during this session in addition to the YouTube not being streamed while we were in debate. I've received so many calls and messages about the frustration of those who are trying to keep tabs on what the legislature's doing on a live basis. But most disappointing is what's happened with some of the bills. For example, Bill 12, to return public health to public health in Mangila. After we have spent $1 million on what's the equivalent of A&E to begin construction for public health, ignored by this body. Bill 13, to create a public-private partnership for GMH when GMH is in a crisis of management, Bill 13, to create a public-private partnership for GMH when GMH is in a crisis of management, ignored by this body. We ignored the struggles with access to care, the hospital that's carrying the weight of decades of neglect, and with families who lack the public health services that were once central to their lives, available and accessible, now not. At a time like this, the people of Guam deserve action from us, and that we base our decisions on what is good for the island as a whole, not on political alliances or personalities As you know, the public-private partnership at GMH is a solution that's been recommended for years by experts, by leaders, community advocates, and the management changes recommended by the paid consultant. Both of those bills were rooted in testimony, data, and even paid consultants' recommendations, and they are urgent actions, and they would require transparency. They would give us the transparency that we do not currently have in regards to GMH. We also acted on CLTC bills to what would in effect remove about 165 acres from the trust for purposes of residential or agricultural lease, and use the trust as the land bank for other government obligations or private business needs without competitive valuation or compensation to the trust. This is contrary to the purpose of the trust. It violates the fiduciary duties of the trustees, and this puts the entire trust and all of its beneficiaries at risk, at risk of losing everything. Because we pledged, when the land was put there, that we would treat that as a trust, protect it above everything else for those beneficiaries. We also pretended, in passing those bills, to be deaf to the people of Dedido, who've objected to what they believe is toxic to their community, while we are facing toxicity in the water in Dedido and Gigo, and many other villages on island perhaps. We ignored the residents in Fedeon and many more of the people of Guam who are fighting to protect our lands, those who gathered in our gallery today and have come during our session to just remind us what those trusts were created for, and that our land is sacred, and that we have a duty bigger than taking care of one or two businesses, much bigger, to take care of 8,000 beneficiaries. And we and the trustees of the commission are able to do that without raiding the trust, without degrading the land, without acting, without full analysis, without getting full
Thank you. Thank you. Just for the public, our YouTube feed was out of our control. It was at the YouTube site. We had no control of the YouTube broadcast. It was from YouTube, not from our site. Thank you very much. On brief extension, gentleman from Epen, I mean Talavufo, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to offer these remarks tonight. For the executive, spending is okay. Restraint over the last seven years is not okay. An overridden Budget Act in 2021 elapsed into law in 2022, not a budget the executive wanted or cared to work with. Her first and three preceding budgets all showed an increaser just near the status quo. That latter goes back to the first year of the current executive in office. Her predecessors, outside of Felix Camacho, all Republican governors dealt with one veto in the modern era, with the executive joining fellow Democrat Carl Gutierrez with two budget acts overwritten by this body. This speaks to the heart of our separation of powers as outlined in the Organic Act. This co-equal branch sets the policy of the government of Guam. Adalup has a role to execute the fiscal year 2026 Budget Act that is now public law. Our sister branch of the judiciary has been patient. Big changes are happening at the Guam Judicial Center too, as a result of this recent override. The FY 2026 Budget Act is now our collective guide for the next 363 days. I want to take a moment and commend the good finance and government operations chairman from the village of Timuning for this effort. I look forward to working with him in the year ahead and perhaps quarterly meetings to keep track of this effort moving forward. I also want to thank the members of the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and the National Guard for their advocacy of our critical agencies in the recent process. I ask the rest of my colleagues to use the next year as a way forward for us to work closer together. The recent deliberative process on the budget was necessary and important for our branch in completing our most important mandate. I want to thank the agencies under my respective committee. Thank you all for the work in the budget process, and thank you for your service to the people of Guam. I have a message tonight for the executive. I pray that with this particular process complete, that we can continue to work with you on implementing the priorities in the Budget Act. I remain available to talk with you and your team moving forward and continue to find solutions to the myriad of issues that remain important to our island community. Finally, I ask the people of Guam to remember what you saw here this week and what this override and the votes tonight symbolize. It is a symbol of our democracy at work. It is a symbol of supporting our public services while supporting the very part of our community to which every dollar outlined in this Budget Act comes from. Also, I ask that you follow the process of these agencies, who are stewards of those tax-paying dollars. Continue to be a part of the common sense, public policy-creating process that has more than defined at this point the 38th Guam Legislature. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time this evening.
Thank you very much. Brief extension of remarks. Gentleman from Epen, sir, you are recognized.
Seduus massi, Mr. Speaker, and buenas noches to the people of Guam. Thank you if you're able to watch our livestreams, very appreciated, Mr. Speaker. And just to address that, I too have been in receipt of a lot of complaints about the livestream, and I understand this happened in the previous term. Sometimes we'd wait and see if YouTube came back up, but just because it's YouTube going down, it doesn't change the fact that our people want to be able to watch what happens in the People's House. And I ran into many people here in Agatia walking on my way to the session hall, and they were all very upset because they're paying attention to the bills that we're discussing and we're debating, and many of these people don't have the cable TV, so they're relying on the internet to watch our sessions, you know, from the north all the way to the south, Mr. Speaker. I want to thank the people who came to stand in our gallery, very appreciated that they came and they tried to let their voices be heard. It's unfortunate, though, that some of us in here are a little bit tangled to what the people are saying, and it's even more unfortunate that when these individuals came to let their voices be heard in the people of Guam's house, they were initially denied access to the balcony, Mr. Speaker, and it was under your order that the balcony was opened up for them to take their places up there with the signs. And I like it. I think that we need to be made uncomfortable here in the People's House, and I appreciate that they came with the signs, because not everybody can do that, Mr. Speaker. But the people of Guam, they're angry. They're angry because they are watching, when they can, what is going on, and they're seeing the priorities session after session in this 38th Guam Legislature. And the priority has been, it was very clear on Monday, the priority has been to take care of people who don't really need to be taken care of, the wealthiest of the wealthiest businesses, the elite of the elites of our island, the government of Guam. They're all eating first while our people starve every day. The raiding of the Chamorro Land Trust. I'm proud to have voted no on these bills. I'm not going to vote yes on another bill involving the Chamorro Land Trust Commission unless it's doing something meaningful to get people out onto the lots, to get our people onto the land, and to get our people into the houses. 165 acres, Mr. Speaker, have been taken out of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. And we're also looking at a bill potentially that will remove 242 acres from the beautiful village of Malesu, where my grandmother's family was raised. And it's the priorities, Mr. Speaker. We take care of the wealthiest corporations with a 1% reduction in the BPT, taking $80 million away from the government of Guam revenues, $80 million that could go to our schools. They said it's going to be a disaster. $80 million that could pay our people's tax refunds. It was very clear, the administration said they're going to run out of money to pay our people's tax refunds. $80 million that the Guam Memorial Hospital is definitely going to need, they said as much in committee of the whole. But the priority of our colleagues in here wasn't to take care of our people who are struggling, our poor, our most vulnerable. They can't hear the cries of the people of Guam because their ears are filled with the sweet talk of special interests that have taken over the people of Guam's house here in this session hall. My dear people, for some of my colleagues, it doesn't matter if they're Republican or Democrat, because there's one thing that they agree on. The money, the special interests, passing these bills so that they can rake in the donations when they all run for governor next year. Dimamaygo seduus, and I'll tell you what, the people of Guam aren't sleeping either, Mr. Speaker. They see what's going on here in the People's House, and I know they don't like it. Seduus massi, Mr. Speaker, and God bless Guam.
Thank you very much, sir. On brief extension of remarks, any other senator wishing to speak on brief extension of remarks? No other senator. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn subject to call to the Speaker.
There's a motion to adjourn this session subject to the call of the Speaker. Without objection, any objections? No objections, so order.